It's called meeting to order today. Would you please stand for the indication. It's gonna be led by Mr. Randy Riley, youth pastor at the current church. And we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you God for the opportunity to be here tonight and to pray for these great leaders. Lord God, we just ask for your wisdom in every decision that is made and every topic that is discussed. Father, we thank you that we are part of a community that still puts you first, believes in you, and honors you. Lord God, we just pray that you continue to bless this community. Every official, every leader, our mayor, everyone that is involved. Father God, we give you all the praise, honor, and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to vouch to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate that, Mr. Riley. We saw you on Facebook getting tased the other day at the youth police academy.
Voluntarily.
Voluntarily.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dodson.
Here.
Councilmember Nealon.
Here.
Councilmember Petty.
Here.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Here.
Councilmember Swain.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Do you have a copy of the minutes from last month's regular meeting that was on May 20th, 2019? Are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. Motion. Second. Motion is second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Behold, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolutions supporting a grant application that will utilize federal aid transportation funds and award. I'll ask the clerk, please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Bamburin, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Bamburin to utilize federal aid transportation alternative program funds. Whereas the city of Bamburin understands federal aid transportation alternative program funds are available at eighty percent federal participation and twenty percent local management to develop or improve the downtown Bamburin streetscape project. And whereas the city of Bamburin understands that federal aid funds are available for this project on a reimbursable basis before any work to be accomplished and proof of payment prior to actual monetary reimbursement. And whereas this project using federal funding will be open and available for use by the general public and maintained by the applicant for the life of the project. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Bamburin, Arkansas, that section one, the city of Bamburin will participate in accordance with its designated responsibility, including maintenance of this project. Section two, Mayor Joe Hurst and City Clerk Professor Phyllis Thomas are hereby authorized and directed to execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of the above stated project. Section three, the city of Bamburin, the city of Bamburin City Council pledges its full support and hereby authorizes the Arkansas State Highway and Transportation Department to initiate action to implement this project.
This is the same grant that we received that's currently, we're using it for corner trail sidewalks. We built other sidewalks before with this grant. This is for the downtown streetscape. This is, it's actually an application that we submitted a couple of years ago that we got denied that year. But we've kind of made some updates and feel like we have a really good chance to do that. We want to continue investing in downtown. We really think there's a good chance to get this. It's basically, for now, this project, it's a total of $615,000. The grant amount, if we were to be awarded, the maximum will be $409,200 from the state and then the city would actually pay $123,000 of that. It's three blocks of Main Street, starting at Seventh and Eighth Street and go down to the next two intersections there. We'll have new crosswalks dropping, irrigation piping, benches, tree shrubs, other landscape material fixing sidewalks. So this is something that we want to continue to invest in downtown and this is a great opportunity with this grant.
Is there a limit on the amount that you can apply for?
It's five hundred though.
So the max is five hundred. That's why we go next to the other half hopefully.
Taking into everything we can to keep the momentum downtown going.
It's terrific. I do have a motion to adopt the resolution. So move.
Second.
Motion.
Who is the motion?
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
I have it and therefore declare the resolution, which its number is?
Zero six dash zero one dash two zero one nine.
Zero six dash zero one dash two zero one nine has passed. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to renew the annual software and subscription support for the police department. I'll ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Bamburin, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing the mayor to renew the annual software subscription and support for the police department. Whereas the police department has been using on the go formerly Information Technologies LLC records management software to direction store police reports since 1998. And whereas in 2007, the Bamburin City Council approved upgrading the software from the standard edition to the enterprise edition. And whereas the software subscription and software support payment is due for the annual renewal. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Bamburin, Arkansas, that section one, the mayor is authorized to renew the software subscription and software support for the enterprise edition of records management at a price of $32,582.16.
Thirty questions. We included the invoice and it seemed last year, it was a little bit of an increase from last year that we approved. It was 31,329. This year it's 32,528.
Mayor, what exactly does that mean? What do we do?
It's, this is their computer system that they're using, their software.
I understand.
It's essential, it's essential to their duties. You can ask Chief Hannon all the technical questions. I'm too stuck to be able to answer them. But now, is there anything else? Motion. Okay. Have a motion?
Yeah, I would like a motion to that effect.
Todd, or Oliver Wood made the motion. You make a second.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
I have it, I therefore declare the resolution number?
Zero six dash zero two dash two zero one nine.
Zero six dash zero two dash two zero one nine has passed. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to consider the final payment for the Drennan Scott House sidewalk improvement project. I'll ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Bamburin, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution approving the final payment for the Drennan Scott House sidewalk improvement project and for other purposes. Whereas Hawkins, where engineers incorporated acting as the construction manager for the city of Bamburin, Arkansas advertised for bids for construction sidewalks within the city. And whereas the city council approved the mayor entering into a construction contract for Goodwin and Goodwin Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $169,075 by resolution number ten dash zero eight dash two zero one eight. And whereas the city's final payment schedule decreased the total amount of the contract by $34,984.50. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Bamburin, Arkansas, that section one, the city of Bamburin, Arkansas accepts and approves the total payment of $134,090.50 to Goodwin and Goodwin Incorporated as set forth and attached here to section two, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized by the city council for the city of Bamburin to pay all expenses relating to the Drennan Scott House sidewalk improvement project and to execute all documents necessary to effectuate said changes.
It's not very often you hear a contract, you happen to make those changes. Larry Yancey's here from Hawkins and where he's, he's been on us, with us on this project. This is a project, it was a partnership that we had with RDOT and also with A and M Railroad. RDOT paid, I think it was ninety percent of the crossing costs at the railroad there. And it's, it's really been a great project and now we're doing.
Mayor, counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak. But as, as Mayor Hurst described, this is a reconciliation change order actually reducing the contract amount. There were some quantities, it's a unit price contract, so there were quantities built into the, the contract to do the work. We had some coordination with Arkansas Railroad there. They relocated one of their gates and required some reduction in quantities as well as some other other runs in the project. Still have the entire project complete and with a reduced contract amount. So I'm glad to answer your questions and kind of getting the specifics of, you know, what was, what was taken out, what was not used to complete the project. Again, a very good project between a lot of parties. Took a while to get it, get it done, but it's one that really went hand in hand and a good project to achieve.
Just a clarification question. In section one, we're talking about acceptance approves the total payment. That's the total revised contract, not the balance due.
Correct.
That's the total amount of the contract. So we really don't call out the total, the balance due, we're just calling out the revised contract.
Certainly. The final payment request is for approximately $1,000.
Right.
Payment request number one, we're approximately $50,000. The total amount in the resolution was $134,000. That's the final contract amount.
Yes, I just want to make sure we had to.
Any other question?
Has this increased foot traffic? Do you know?
I see a lot of foot traffic in the, in the area. There was, was a partial sidewalk there, so there was kind of a worn path. I haven't been by every day to, to see, but it's definitely gives access all the way from Main Street up to the Drennan Scott House, Drennan Scott House, so.
It's certainly safer.
It definitely is. It's kind of hard to remember what it looked like with the guardrail in the sidewalk, but definitely a better, a better path up to the Drennan Scott House.
Okay. Excellent. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah.
Second. Motion. All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
I have it, I therefore declare the resolution number?
Zero six dash zero three dash two zero one nine.
Zero six dash zero three dash two zero one nine has passed.
Mayor, just a quick comment on that. Besides being an upgrade to that particular area, speaking for Keith Bamburin Beautiful, it has dramatically reduced the littering in that particular area. So that's another positive.
That's great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to do business with a city employee. I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Bamburin, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance for compliance with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash forty-two dash one zero seven, authorizing the city to conduct business with an official or employee of the city of Bamburin, Arkansas. Whereas ACA fourteen dash forty-two dash one zero seven requires an ordinance be enacted specifically permitting the conducting of any business between an official or employee of the city and the city of Bamburin. And whereas the city of Bamburin wishes to conduct business on an ongoing basis with number one LLC, which is partly owned by Mr. Bill Dodson, father of Bamburin City Council member, Mr. Matthew Dodson. And whereas it is the desire of the administration and the Bamburin City Council that in compliance with ACA fourteen dash forty-two dash one zero seven is satisfied for the conducting of all city business. Now therefore be ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Bamburin, Arkansas, that section one, number one LLC, which is partly owned by Mr. Bill Dodson, father of Bamburin City Council member, Mr. Matthew Dodson, is hereby authorized to conduct business with the city of Bamburin.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and go over a second reading. So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it. Therefore declare the motion carried and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for the second time.
An ordinance for compliance with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash forty-two dash one zero seven, authorizing the city to conduct business with an official or employee of the city of Bamburin, Arkansas.
We have a motion to further suspend the rules and go over a third and final reading. So move. Second. A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it. Therefore declare the motion carried and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for the third and final reading.
An ordinance for compliance with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash forty-two dash one zero seven, authorizing the city to conduct business with an official or employee of the city of Bamburin, Arkansas.
Pretty self-explanatory, just making sure that we're being transparent as we can and we'll see these ordinances coming up from top to bottom. Motion to approve. Motion.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
I have it, I declare the ordinance number?
Zero eight, zero eight dash two zero one nine.
Zero eight dash two zero one nine has passed. Based on the agenda, the financial report, we have copies of the report. Will the clerk please read the amount?
One million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars, seventy-eight cents.
Motion. Second. A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? I declare the motion carried. Moving around along the, under boards and commissions, we have two appointments in one appointment room. Reappointment to the Bamburin Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. There's a letter in your packet stating the names. We have the appointments of Matthew Yancy and Jack Moffett and then the reappointment of Wendell Westhall. Do I hear a motion to approve those appointments and reappointments? Motion approved. Motion.
Second.
And second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried. Also, a letter from the Municipal Utilities Commission wanting to reappoint Mr. J. W. Floyd to their commission. Do I hear a motion to approve that? So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare that motion carried. Next on the agenda is the department reports. You have copies of the reports from all the different departments. Are there any questions, comments? If not, declare those department reports filed as submitted.
Make a praise statement?
Car, June 2nd, big bust. I'm just curious, is that a tip or something? That's a lot to be in a truck.
It was actually, Arkansas Highway Police called and requested a set of equipment available, so we watched and just pulled it out. The truck and trailer.
Inside, among other stuff, in the truck?
Yes.
Big, big, yeah.
It's pretty crazy.
Well, next, under miscellaneous and general discussion, we have a street closing request from the Center for Armed Education for the blow run that'll be on August 10th, 2019. There's a letter in there explaining where we're going, what that had been about. We've had those in the past. This, this was actually scheduled, they had to reschedule because of the flooding and not able to go through Lee Creek Park a while back, so they're just rescheduling that for August 10th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Wanted to introduce Mr. Wally Bailey. He is going to be our new planning director. Sitting back here with Larry. He's, brings a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge, a lot of expertise. We're excited to get Wally involved and help us to continue to move forward in the planning department as we look at all sorts of different regulations and planning and all sorts of things that we'll be doing with Wally. And we're just really, really excited about having him.
I'm really excited to have him. Our replacement.
Could we get like two minutes from him on a background? You want to say a little bit about yourself?
Sure.
Two minutes isn't enough.
Two minutes. Forty-one years.
Well, it all began since February 1, 1956. Well, I don't like talking about myself so much, but to say that, I worked for the city of Fort Smith, you've read the paper, forty-one years and some months. And I, recent point in life, I didn't want to get back to doing something more of what I like doing, a job of all of the more administrative work and other things. But I enjoy the planning, the nuts and bolts, and working with people and working with the planning commission and council members and mayor. And my experience for the city of Fort Smith started in the water department for three years and then I went to the community development block rec program and evolved into eventually into building official position and eventually evolved into doing a lot of, oversaw a lot of building projects for the city, a lot of the significant building projects, police station, fire station, waterfront development, convention center, all the four new laboratories, renovation, restoration, and salvation of Ms. Lawrence's building after the ninety-six tornado. And most interesting historic preservation project. And also Director of Development Services where I had responsibility for parking and work, property cleanup, building codes, community development block grant programs, parking garage maintenance, historic preservation. And for the end, I had the full business license administration and that was kind of wore me out for few months I had. But anyway, so I've had a wealth of, spread of wealth of city government. And Mayor Hurst and I have had conversations for a long time. Actually, he may not have mentioned it, but Mayor Hurst actually interned with the city of Fort Smith when I was there too. So we've known each other for quite some time. But we, I'm excited about this opportunity for myself to serve the mayor, the council, the citizens of Bamburin in the capacity which I can to the best of my ability and just do whatever, whatever I can do to make Bamburin the best possible city in the region.
What's your starting date with us?
Today.
Today?
This morning.
You have a great reputation.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Councilmember. And we have to answer any questions you have. If not, today's been mostly trying to get my email to work and other things like that.
Jennifer said you did have some IT experience, is that right?
Yes, don't say yes.
I know, okay, that's probably good. Been very helpful.
Well, good deal. Thank you. I appreciate it. Also have in the audience Julie Murray is our Chamber of Commerce President, CEO. She's new, not really new to the area. She's come back to Bamburin, but we're excited to have her here with the chamber. We've been meeting off and on and we're, we're ready to get going on all sorts of different things in the chamber. Anything you'd like to share?
I'd like to give her an opportunity because I'm, I'm on the board there and I'm pretty proud to have her. I think a lot of people don't get a chance to hear about her. We have a great partnership with the chamber, so not to put you on the spot, but if you could just give us a few, few tidbits about your history and say, I guess I did sort of put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Rule under pressure, she's got.
No, I'm just thrilled to be here. I haven't had a chance to make a city council meeting yet and you'll see me pretty regularly here and I'm excited to be here. As the mayor said, I grew up here, graduated from high school, moved away, and it's time to come back. My husband and I are excited to be home. My family is here and we've got a lot of exciting things happening at the chamber. Some of you may know, the chamber invested in some pretty significant software at the beginning of the year with a new website and some very powerful back office software that gives our members some great new tools to help promote their businesses and grow their businesses. And so that's what we've been focused on for the last two months since I've been here, is getting that up and going. And you'll be seeing a lot more of that happening on our website and Facebook. And so going forward through the first rest of the year, we'll be working on our long-term strategy and what our members need from us and how we can work with city and county to continue the momentum of the community development that's happening here. Thank you.
Excellent. We wanted to announce, we, we put it online on Facebook and social media, but we will be having the Fourth of July fireworks event on Thursday, next Thursday. It will be at the Field of Dreams. The gates will open at seven. So we've, we've done a lot of work to clear certain paths so that our residents can come out and watch those fireworks. Any other details? We, we've got that information we can share with you, but we're excited about doing that.
Should we level the hospitality house? That's the only danger point I see.
They won't be over there. There won't be anybody around there. They're only going to use the big parking lot when you first come in. Everything else will be.
Shut down.
Security out there and all that.
And porta-potties on the way.
Sweet.
Speaking of that, you might have noticed that the Quorum Court actually, they canceled work for their employees on the fifth, on that Friday. And I had a similar thought of doing that as well. Kind of just wanted your feedback on that. I don't know if we require a resolution or anything like that, but I just kind of wanted to bring that up and see if you guys are okay with it. The objections, huh? Good deal? Fine. So that fifth, Friday, July 5th, we'll take that as a holiday. Great. Appreciate that. Last, just the last thing I wanted to mention before we open it up to the public. It's just, this is the first time we've met since the flood and it's, it's been a chaotic, it's been stressful. It's also been a blessing. It's been, just coming from my perspective, coming out of it, just being thankful and being blessed and of course it could have been a lot worse than it was. We are very, very fortunate here in Bamburin and we are very fortunate to have the leadership that we have in our city with our chiefs, Chief Hannon, Chief Arnold, and just with all our different departments, Wayne, Paul, and David, just all the work that went on those two weeks. I can tell you from the inside that there was a lot of work going on. And the whole purpose was to protect and serve and to, to promote the health, safety, and welfare that we always talk about in our ordinances and it was truly happening. And there was so much work going on. I just appreciate everyone that we have in the city. We're really, really fortunate to have who we are. Of course, we've been through floods in the past, nothing of this caliber, of course, but I think we did a pretty good job. And also just all the different coordination, working with Judge Gilstrap in county and Brad Thomas, the emergency manager. I could list tons of names and maybe someday I'll do that. But it was a coordinated effort. We couldn't have done it all alone. We worked with sheriff, all the different departments in county and the city and then you started adding all the FEMA's, the Corps of Engineers, the Forestry Service, the National Guard. It is a large scale effort and we were really, really fortunate. So I, I just appreciate it as the mayor, just to see the community come, come together. We had a few people displaced, RV park was displaced and we had churches come together and individuals calling, wanting to help and organizing and with Red Cross and various churches, it was just really great to see that we took care of each other. We're kind of at the point now where, where that thread is over, but now we're in that recording, we're trying to get reimbursed eventually and so we're doing a lot of work to get all the information in, attending all the various meetings with FEMA. This week, I believe that FEMA will be doing their assessments this.
No, that's. No, that's our flood insurance.
Flood, our insurance.
Tomorrow and Wednesday.
That'll be tomorrow and Wednesday and then we'll have a, at some point FEMA will come back and we'll have a sit-down.
And we'll have a breakout meeting, probably in Otsark and then they'll start and everybody down.
So in some ways, we're just beginning in that process, but I'm just glad to have everyone that we have in place to help us get through that.
I know Fort Smith had a lot of homes that were affected. Do we know how many in Bamburin or Crawford County were affected, just Paul or?
The number that I got, and this is, it's going to be updated later, I just received these numbers. For the individuals and household program, in the whole county of Crawford County, there were fourteen applications that were approved.
Most of those were voluntary, weren't they?
It doesn't have it break down by that. There were fourteen applications approved, over a hundred and nine thousand dollars approved. But those numbers could be updated next Friday, so.
Fourteen, fourteen-hundred, that's. I know we have the FEMA, but I'll also throw out, the Federal Home Loan Bank has some disaster funding available. I think it might be easier to work with than FEMA in terms of time limits, so if somebody, if we got a coordination point, I'd be glad to share that information, all the contacts for that.
That'd be great. Anything we can provide, you know, this is going to be helpful.
I hope this is not out of line either, but city council members, if you have some feelings about the future of the field of drains, please share those with Paul or myself. We've had a lot of shares, we've had a lot of shares, a lot of opinions, so.
We've been asked those questions, you know, well, what's the future? You know, our facilities that were affected, we had the field of drains, of course. Then we had our yard waste facility, had some damage to it. We're back up and running, that program's up and running, picking up the limbs in the neighborhoods and that's up to the public now. And then really just the levee, I guess, are really the three properties that the city owns that were affected.
My, Meyer Park.
Yeah, the, the, Creighton, Myer, Meyer Park as well. But the question, you know, does come up, well, what's the future hold for the field of drains? At this point, it's hard to make a decision because we're not through the process with FEMA yet. We don't know what's going to be covered. Last year, there was two alternatives that we presented to FEMA to mitigate the flooding, whether it was to move it to a new location or to build a wall was another. And it was multi-million dollars for both options. So we're not to that point yet, but we just want to make sure we go through the process, we get all the paperwork, we dot all the i's, cross all the t's so that we can make the best informed decision of is it, is it going to cost, you know, ballpark figure to build back where we were versus what can, what's it going to cost and what sort of support we're going to get if we do decide to move it somewhere else? So a lot of those decisions are yet to be made and as we get more information, we'll share those. And if we need to hold special meetings, we can do that and hear from the public and that may be a good idea as we get further down the road.
Can we also get nut plate on Main Street?
Sure. We've got basically two-thirds of it done. I'm sorry, three-quarters of it done. We've got one lane to go, we just need two days of no rain.
Good luck.
Yeah, not for this weekend.
Well, the part that's done is wonderful.
It rides a lot better, it looks a lot better.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Really does look good. Got some good things going on in the city right now.
Can I just say another thing, was it back in forty-nine they built that levee?
It's in the forties.
And whatever job they did, I mean, it's integrity hill and I mean, we got to praise those people back then, that was quite a remarkable thing. I've never seen flood like this before and, you know, I've lived in Florida and South Carolina, Alabama, Texas, but not like this. And it was pretty amazing to see just the immense control it had because that stuff really could have gone a long ways.
You know, as a city official, I didn't realize this, that our firemen and the National Guard were out twenty-four-seven walking that levee, the length of it, to make sure that there was not any issues. They noted any issues and the floor called up and I was just so impressed with. We don't realize, I mean, as a city official, I didn't know and we don't realize what all our folks are doing out there to keep us all safe, so.
About checked every four hours, looking to assess that, that's, that's lucky.
And a great water rescue? It was a great effort, it really was. But we're still in the, trying to see what the future holds. And also, to be remiss not to mention Mayor Freeman in 2009 and County Judge Judd Hall when they certified the bodies, which was a dig. You know, I'm sure at the time there were questions about, you know, why would we do this, that sort of thing, but the priority was there and it was, obviously it was a great decision. Yeah, it's really incredible, Paul, you just kept hearing the corse, a levee is not meant to withstand the height and the pace of the pressure that was put on there for the river, so it's pretty incredible. But we had a plan in place, we worked together and coordinated and it was a really great effort. We're going to reevaluate that effort and see what can we do better, because there's all those ways you can do better. Our mission is to keep people safe and so we're currently going through that as well. But if this does happen again, what can we do to improve, so that's ongoing. Any other comments? Before we adjourn, I just wanted to open it up to the public, is there any other comments, questions, or anything to come before council? Brent, you don't have anything to say about the blow run?
Y'all approved it, I'm good. Well, Mayor, when FEMA comes up here, when we hear that word FEMA, what does that mean?
It means a lot of things. It means, it means we want to know how much money we are going to get reimbursement for expenses that were going to be occurring.
Where do they come from, is that what you're going to learn?
We've had, we've had a number of different people, they, it's a federal.
Where do they come from?
It's a federal organization, so we have a, Adam is what we call the Arkansas group of Department of Emergency Management. We have great people on the ground here from the Arkansas Department. But we've also just, we will have someone, I think, was he from Houston?
Yes.
If he was from Houston. It's just a long process.
How many did we have here?
Well, just one to start out, but they'll bring, they'll bring up to ten people. They'll knock out, like the field of drains, they'll knock it out in one day, assessing and but it'll only be after our insurance has come through and then FEMA will come back and do their assessment.
Thank you.
Let's go to Al. Motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Already go to Heather.
Yeah.